Personal attacks. Councilmember Kenny Twil, please put Council Bill 20-005 on the floor.
Yes, I move that Council Bill 20-005 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 20-005 is now open. May we have the staff report?
Thank you. Scott Robinson with Community Planning and Development. This is a request to rezone 2655 to 2671 and 2675 to 2689 South Broadway Street from UMX3, UO1, UO2 to UMS5, UO1, UO2. The property is located in Council District 7 in the Overland neighborhood. It is at the northwest corner of Yale Avenue and Broadway at the south border of the city with Englewood. The proposed UMS5 zone district is in the urban neighborhood context, Main Street with a five-story maximum height allowing up to 70 feet. That would allow buildings in the shop front townhouse and drive-through building forms. The UO1 is the adult use overlay and the UO2 is the billboard overlay. Both of those would remain on the property. So the UMX3 is the current zoning in this section of Broadway on both sides of the street. Heading north to the south is similar zoning in Englewood, a mixed-use arterial zoning. And then to the west is two-unit residential zoning. The subject property is under the State Home Park Mountain View Plain, which would allow a maximum height of 76 feet, which is greater than the maximum height of the proposed zone district of 70 feet. As I mentioned, the property currently has the UO2 billboard use overlay and retain that, retain that, and there is currently a billboard on the site. And given the restrictions on placement of billboards, the property would not be allowed to add a second billboard. So the existing billboard could remain, but they could not add a second one. Current use is commercial, and you can see Broadway has a mix of uses, commercial and office and mixed use. And then to the west is a mix of residential, single unit, two unit, and multi-unit. Here you can see the subject property. This is looking west with Broadway in front, running left to right, north to the right. So you can see the Broadway corridor and then the residential behind it. And then again, the subject property is the top photo there and then some of the surrounding properties in those other photos. This went to Planning Board on December 18th and received a unanimous recommendation of approval. Went to LUDI on January 7th. Is now before you at City Council. Our notice was provided to the registered neighborhood organizations. Overland Park Neighborhood Association has provided a letter of support. In your packet, you also have one additional public comment in support of the application. In order to approve a rezoning, the city must find that five, these five criteria have been met. The first criterion is consistency with adopted plans. There are three adopted plans that apply to this property. First is Comprehensive Plan 2040. As described in your staff report, staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent with several strategies and goals from Comp Plan 2040 that would allow mixed use in full development in an area served by other services and transit on Broadway, creating equitable and inclusive growth and environmentally resilient by reducing the need for additional transportation and infrastructure development. So staff finds the plan consistent with Comp Plan 2040. The second plan is Blueprint Denver. The future context designation for this property is urban, which calls for low and mid-scale residential and mixed use along community corridors such as this with a regular street grid and would be consistent with the urban neighborhood context of the proposed UMS5 zone district. The future place designation is community corridor, which calls for a mix of office, commercial, and residential uses with a linear orientation along a corridor and a height generally up to five stories, again, consistent with the proposed UMS5. Broadway is a Main Street arterial, which again is consistent with that Main Street zoning designation that's proposed and a more intense style of development. And then Yale Avenue is an undesignated local west of Broadway, which is intended to provide that local access from the larger streets to the property. And then in the growth strategy, this falls under the community centers and corridors, which is intended to accommodate 25% of new housing growth and 20% of new employment growth by 2040. So staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent with the recommendations of Blueprint Denver. And then the third plan is the Overland Neighborhood Plan from 1993. It mostly talks about getting reinvestment and revitalization along the Broadway corridor and improving the sort of Main Street aspect of that, which would be consistent with the proposed UMS5 zone district. So staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent with all three adopted plans and the first criterion met. The second criterion is uniformity of district regulations. Staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent would result in the uniform application of the UMS5 zone district. The third criterion is to further the public health, safety, and general welfare of the city. Staff finds the proposed rezoning would do so by implementing the city's adopted plans and promoting mixed-use walkable development, promoting health and safety, and reducing the need for vehicle trips. The fourth criterion is justifying circumstances. Staff finds the proposed rezoning justified by change in changing conditions in the area. There's been new development in the area, creating increase in population, creating increased demand for mixed-use development. Also, a few years ago, the city reconstructed Broadway, putting in significant streetscape improvements to help facilitate that Main Street feel. And so rezoning to Main Street and directing more growth to this area is appropriate, given that investment. And then also, the city adopted Blueprint Denver last year, new plan that gives more concrete direction that this is a Main Street community corridor and five stories is appropriate. And so the rezoning to UMS5 is justified by those changes. And the fifth criterion is consistency with neighborhood context, zone district purpose and intent. Staff finds the proposed rezoning would result in development consistent with the urban neighborhood context description and the purpose and intent of the UMS5 zone district, which is intended for collectors or arterial streets or arterial court, street corridors where building scale one to five stories is desired. As I mentioned, Broadway is a Main Street arterial with a designation of up to five stories. So staff finds the fifth criterion is met and recommends approval. Do you have to answer any questions?
Thank you very much. All right, we have, I believe, 12 people signed up to speak on this item. So I'm going to call the first five up if you'd come sit in this front bench so that we can get to people. So the first five that I have are Matt Godley, Zell Cantrell, Sandra Pierce, Taryn Blake, and Carolyn Bell. If you could come up to the front bench. And Matt Godley, you're up first.
My name is Matt Godley. I am with the owner of the property. So I am here to answer any questions that you all may have. We appreciate your review and we look forward to this development as it takes shape.
Thank you. Next up, Zell Cantrell.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the Denver City Council. Zell Cantrell with Galloway, located at 6162 South Willow Drive in Greenwood Village, Colorado. I'm here with Matt, also here to answer questions, but I did want to extend a thank you to Liz Weigel and also Scott Robinson for preparing the staff report, presenting the staff report, and all their assistance along the way. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Sandra Pierce.
Hi, I'm Sandra Pierce. I live at 2641 South Grant Street. So this is my block. This is my view. This is what I look out every morning when I wake up. But it's not about me. It's not about me, and it's not even about my immediate neighbors who have the same exact beautiful view. This is about the citizens of Denver because a half a block north from my house is the city of Kunming Park. And it is one of the best places in Denver to watch the sunsets. People come from all over the city to just sit in our little park and watch the sunset. People walk there. They bring their children. They bring their dogs. They bring their glass of wine and even occasionally a margarita. And they sit there and they watch the sunsets. That view will be destroyed if five-story buildings are built in this section of Broadway. And I come from the East Coast, and the reason I moved here is because living on the Northeast Coast is like living in a hamster wheel. You go, 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 and you never get off. And that's one of the beautiful things about Denver. The people of Denver work hard. It's a productive city. It produces all sorts of wonderful things. We're growing. But you know what? The people of Denver know how to stop and smell the roses. And I live in the Rosedale Harvard Gulch neighborhood, and that park up there used to be filled with roses. It is no longer, but it's filled with people who feed their soul by watching those sunsets. And you're going to have a population that is soulless if you keep destroying views from our beautiful parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Taryn Blake. Taryn Blake. All right, Carolyn Bell, and I'm going to call the next five if you could come up to the bench. Jeff DeHardy, Mark Haverland, Galen Strong, Jim P. Pay, and Brad Trow, if you could come up to the front bench. Carolyn Bell, go ahead.
Good afternoon, members of City Council. My name is Dr. Carolyn Bell. I live at 2641 South Grant Street in the View Plain, which is a sacred zone, to my understanding. There are only 10 of them in Denver. We have, basically, we're supposed to have protected views of our gorgeous mountains. I want to start my comments, however, by saying that my RNO did not respond to your request for a response. That is not because they don't agree or they do agree. They're just disengaged. They're just not doing anything right now. Now, what it means is that they're not in compliance with the RNO statutes of Denver. And much to the chagrin of the residents of our neighborhood, we all feel very badly about that. We're going to hold elections on Thursday and change that, we hope, because it needs to be done. But we didn't say, we didn't, that we agreed. Overland may have. We have not made a statement. It doesn't mean we're in agreement. Now, what is going to happen when you put these buildings up? More people, more traffic, more congestion, more pollution, more trash and garbage, more dog poop, for crying out loud, more overpriced and vacant apartments and commercial space? Drive down Broadway and look at the empty buildings. We don't need more of those. We need more quality traffic flow. Congested Broadway means people take off from Broadway and go up Harvard to go over to Logan, right through Harvard Gulch neighborhood. This endangers people. It endangers the animals and our pets especially because it's an area of the city with very, very high walkability. There's going to be less parking. We already have difficulty with Swallow Hill. They've made as many arrangements as they can, but we're busting out as it is. There's going to be less airflow. There's going to be blocked views, and there's going to be obstructed sunlight. Walk out here on 14th and whatever this one is, Bannock, and feel the wind as it comes whistling down between the buildings. That's what we will experience. Please, don't do that to us. We like living in this city because it is accommodating to us. It's a pleasant place to live. And also, many, many small businesses along there will be driven out because when you start building these buildings with tons of people, it becomes a gentrified area. And that gentrified area is when it, where rates go up, rents go up, commercial things go down. We won't, we just won't have the quality of life that we bought into when we bought our homes there. There will be less room. We have gorgeous parks there. If you've been in Harvard Gulch, you know. We also have Rosedale Park and we have Kunming Park. They're contingent. Animals live there. We got coyotes, yay. We have fox, all kinds of wonderful things. They go down to the river. They're going to go across Broadway now with even more traffic? Please, no more urban canyons.
I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you very much. Next up, Jeff DeHardy.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jeff D. Hardy, 1970 South Clayton Street, Denver. I'm here tonight to support the rezoning request, and I feel that this is an equitable zoning request change, which based off of my understanding allocates about 10% of the residential units within this proposed mixed-use project at 80% of AMI. Equitable in the sense that we are reserving some units for those in need at levels where folks can live here. In addition to that, when we're factoring in the increased sales tax, property values, and property tax revenues, I feel like this complements the improvements along the South Broadway corridor that had been put in place for these types of projects and that are in alignment with the adopted plans. So with that, I express my support for this rezoning, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mark Haverland.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for your time. My name is Mark Haverland, resident of Denver on South Grant Street. I went out and drove my neighborhood a little bit this weekend. I found that this site is in the middle of 21 blocks, north and south, without a five-story building, and at least 40 blocks east to west without a five-story building. I gave up counting at federal. I support redevelopment on Broadway, but I think this is the wrong way to do it. I think Broadway could be a fantastic commercial corridor, a fantastic walkable corridor, and a fantastic place for residents and businesses, but five-story buildings is not the right way to do it, especially in the middle of such a vast space without anything close to that. Last point is, this location has single-family homes less than a block away to the west, one block away to the east. Putting a five-story building right in the middle of this doesn't make much sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Galen Strong.
Hi, I live at 2604 South Pennsylvania Street. I have lived there 30 years. I don't know if you've seen the map of the protected view. You will see that this project is on the east side of the protected view. With respect, it is on the extreme east side by 20 feet in the Overland Park neighborhood. It impacts their view not at all. It has nothing to do with Overland Park. It would be the same as saying that another district should have a say about something built at Mississippi and Downing that impact the protected views of Wash Park, or that someone in Cherry Creek should talk about the protected views from Cramner Park. Cherry Creek would keep their views. Wash Park would keep their views. When Overland talks about Rosedale and this protected view, it impacts Overland not at all. I have received in the past month four emails from my city councilmen. None of them mentioned this zone change request hearing. Ro Higna threw it out there in an email on the 28th stating that this was a planning board public hearing, that this was the time to come and voice my objections. But is it? Or is this a last-ditch effort on a vote that has already been decided? I don't even know what's going on here. Is it too late? Former city planner Brad Buchanan said, "View Plains are holy ground." Is this what we're getting from the new city planner? The Denver government website shows an elevation pin at 5327 at the beginning of this View Plain. The elevation pin, according to Denver Gov., at Yale and Broadway is at 2,596 for a height difference of 31 feet. View Plains allow for a height to the pin elevation, that is 5327 plus an additional 1.7 feet for every 100 feet in a horizontal distance from the pin. So as you get further, your buildings can get higher. I don't know where the calculation came from. That gives them 76 feet. That would be 7,600 feet from this pin to this pin.
I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you very much. Next up is Jim Pay.
I just became aware of this meeting last night, so I put together some quick comments and sent you all a letter this afternoon. I don't know if any of you have seen this, but a couple of things that stuck out to me as I read the report and recommendation. One of those was that the 10 departments were asked to comment or respond to the application, and there was basically no response or comment from any of them. I'll just move to the justifying circumstances that the applicants put in there that were in the application. They talked about, since the day of the approval of the existing zoning district, there's been change to such a degree that the proposed rezoning is in the public interest. Well, from my view, the three-story mixed-use development that would be allowed under the current zoning would meet almost all of the criteria that the planners approved and that the new zoning would meet. Ostensibly, there's going to be some new affordable housing units included in the new plan, maybe 10% if it's a 30,000 square foot site. And it's going to be five stories, that's two extra stories. Maybe you're going to get another three to six additional affordable units. I'm not sure what the definition of that is. I'm not sure there's any criteria or requirement for additional affordable housing. Perhaps there's some built into the plan. I haven't had time to research that, but, and I will also comment on the 21 blocks of Broadway that do not have a five-story building. It actually makes for a nice drive as you come into the city. Going south from the site there at Broadway and Yale, there's one five-story building seven blocks to the south in downtown Englewood. There's another complex just across Hamden. But after that, there's nothing for another 20 blocks going south. So Broadway's kind of remained a open view corridor, if you will. I'm with Mark. I do agree that redevelopment on Broadway is something we need to see, but I'm not sure five stories is where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Brad Trow, and I'll invite Colleen Ingram and Jane Potts up to the front.
Hi, thanks, everybody. Good evening to you. I live right there, Brad Trow, in the neighborhood, and I'm just here to ask you guys to, you know, decline the request. A lot of families, mine in particular, and several others, go to that park and enjoy the views there. And if you let one do it, you're going to have to let everybody else do it, and it's going to change the neighborhood and the feel of the neighborhood. And Overland is not affected by this, so they don't care because they're, you know, this is to the east of them. That's their eastern boundary. Doesn't matter to them. So we're the neighborhood that's affected by this. So I feel like our community would not benefit from this at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Colleen Ingram.
Hi there, my name is Colleen Ingram. I live in the Rosedale neighborhood at 2559 South Logan Street. I will say that because our RNO does not take a stand on issues like this, our neighborhood was not notified. So many of us are finding out about this a day or two before. I think that we would have a lot more people if we did have a registered neighborhood organization that did take a stand on things like this. If you've never been to our neighborhood, like people have said, what makes it really unique is this amazing view that we have from the top of the hill in the parks. If we start to build buildings that block that view, we really do lose out. I mean, people do honestly come for the sunset. My kids love to play in that park. And this zoning would change the landscape of our neighborhood forever. It also sets a very dangerous precedent that we will continue to see the rise of these buildings until we can no longer see the mountains. And I would also like to say that our neighborhood has a lot of historic structures that are very small in stature. I live at the top of the hill, but the homes at the bottom of the hill that are one-story, which is, they're very, very tiny homes, that were built, you know, 120 years ago, will completely have the light blocked. They will have their views completely blocked, and those people will have to leave the neighborhood so that our homes will then have to be developed into taller and taller buildings. We, this is just, it would just honestly be horrible for our neighborhood, which is historic. And once the developer has completed the work and taken their paycheck, they will move on, but we will continue to have the infrastructure issues, the issues with noise and crime and traffic that were, that were brought up earlier. I hope that this does not pass because it will affect our neighborhoods in Denver.
Thank you. Next up, Jane Potts.
My name is Jane Potts. I live at 2241 South Pinion Court in Rosedale. I grew up in South Denver. I have been along South Broadway my entire life. My dad used to go to the deli. We went to the Mayan Theater, and we called it the Mayan Theater. So I've always loved South Broadway. It has a lot of character, and it's always been the place of a lot of local, small businesses. You get to know the people there, and they get to know you. And I'm wondering, one of the things in this document is called an authentic neighborhood, and I'm trying to figure out how putting a five-story building there is going to keep it to be authentic or a neighborhood. And I don't understand, we have zoning in place when variances are approved again and again. There must have been a reasoning for the zoning to be a three-story building max. Going against the current three-story will set a precedent, and you know what happens when a five-story goes up? The next developer will say, well, I would like you to do the same. Allowing these variances will change the look, the feel, and the history of South Broadway. To me, that cancels out a description of an authentic neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our speakers this evening. We're going to move to questions from members of council on this item, and I will start with just a quick clarifying question. If you could come back up. There's been a lot of talk about the View Plain, and this is the State Home View Plain. Is that correct?
Correct.
And this zoning, the maximum of building that could be built in this zone district, would it pierce that protected View Plain?
No. The maximum height allowed in the zone district is 70 feet. And as I mentioned earlier, the maximum height on this location of the View Plain is 76 feet. So the maximum height of the building would be below the View Plain height.
So unlike some of the places where Wash Park View Plain hits the Gates redevelopment site, where the zoning actually is taller than the View Plain, the View Plain would become the limiter. In this case, the zoning is actually below the protected View Plain, and so there is no possible way under this new zoning that that building could pierce the protected, the State Home protected View Plain?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I see lots of people with questions, so I'm going to, I just wanted to clarify that. Councilman Black.
I was going to ask the same question about the View Plain, but you already answered it. I have a question for the developer. There was a tiny bit of mention about affordable housing, and I am interested in your project and what you have planned for it versus the three stories that it's already zoned for versus the five stories.
Sure. To answer your first question, Councilperson Black, our affordable housing on this, we've agreed in principle with the city. We have not signed an agreement as we've been working with HUD on some long-term financing. So we, as the developer, see this as a long-term hold. We are not getting our paycheck and walking away from this neighborhood. We've been in this neighborhood for many, many years. We're active up on northern parts of Broadway, Broadway in Iowa, Akoma in Iowa. So we're committed to this neighborhood. So we're committed to this neighborhood, and we'd like to see this project come to fruition so that we can continue to enhance the livelihood and the residents, you know, provide the amenities that they deserve in this section of South Broadway. So as a result of that, we're working, as I said, with the city and county on dedicating 10% of the units, which right now, based off of our rough site plan, would be anywhere from eight to 10 units and capping that at 80% AMI. And looking at, I think it's a 60-year covenant that we would be putting in place. And the only holdup on that has been the HUD and some of the subordination issues that we've had to address with them as it relates to allowing for this covenant to be put in place in front of HUD's mortgage.
And if you are not successful tonight, how will your plans change for that affordable housing?
Right now, you know, to address that is speculation. I don't have a keen answer for that. We see this project, you know, quite honestly, the five stories, we are adjacent to a protected district. So there are, en masse, it is not five stories for that full 30,000 square feet that we would control. It steps back at 27 and 1/2 feet, and then it steps back again at, I think it's right around 50 feet. So it's the mass of the building and the protection for, you know, the neighboring residents, I think, is already built into the protected districts that we would be adjacent to.
Okay, one quick question. So all of the people who came here to oppose it, I think, live in the Rosedale neighborhood. Is that correct? Did you all reach out to that RNO? Is there an RNO? Yes.
It's a non-functioning, so we did not, we talked with Overland, but we also...
Okay. The councilwoman is asking a question. Let's let him answer the question.
Yeah, they would have been notified for our petition for the rezone, but we reached out to Overland. We reached out to a number of other businesses in the area, including Swallow Hill. And, you know, every feedback that we had received up until about three days ago has been positive with the rezone. And, you know, they see the benefit and the long-term benefit of increasing the density along South Broadway, one of the major transit corridors here that we have in the city. And to, you know, revitalize that section that has been put forth, especially with the foundations that have been laid, with the capital improvements that have been laid and been put in place, I think this just further enhances what is set in, put in place a few years ago.
One final clarifying question. You mentioned a step up or step down for the architecture. Is it lower, closer to Broadway, and it steps up toward the west? Or is it the opposite?
Opposite. So along Broadway, it would be the single facade going up the five stories. It's the protected district to the west that it steps down as you get closer to the residential community to the west.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, sorry.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions for staff about the, so I'm looking at your staff report where it's talking about the justifying circumstances. Can you talk a little bit about what, so it says, "The applicant cites recent changes in the surrounding area, including the replacement of single-unit homes with two-unit, three-story units representing an increase in density." So is that change in the density in the neighborhood within current zoning? Or have there been a series of rezonings throughout the community up to this point?
My understanding is that is within the current zoning. The zoning is the UTUC, which is two-unit zoning. So it's within the current zoning that they could put in those duplexes.
Okay. So the changes under the justifying circumstances are changes that are happening within the current zoning that is already on the surrounding land?
For the most part, yes.
Okay, thanks. I've got no other questions at the moment. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Robinson, I've got a couple of questions for you, and I will ask a couple of the folks some of the same questions, so hold your comments. So, Mr. Robinson, so the, I heard that, can you talk a little bit about the outreach that was given, that CPD gave to the residents?
Yeah, so this followed our standard notification process. So when we received the application, all RNOs within 200 feet were notified, and postcards were sent to all properties within 200 feet, and all council members were notified, or the affected council members were notified. And then when this was scheduled for a planning board, again, the RNOs within 200 feet were notified. The postcards to properties within 200 feet were also sent out at that time, and a big yellow sign was posted on the property. And then before this hearing tonight, the RNOs were notified one more time, and the property was posted again.
And do you know how many RNOs are within 200 feet of this proposed rezoning?
I believe there are four.
Okay. And again, I'm going to ask the same question to multiple people. So the three to five stories, so currently used by right, it's currently zoned for three stories, is that correct?
Correct.
Is it, there were some comments about the park and viewing the sunset. Used by right, is it possible to destroy the view of the sunset, you know, the three stories, if people were to build using today's zoning?
I don't know the exact view. I know it's, you know, it's protected by that view plane, which, again, is at 76 feet. So a three-story building would not get up to that 76-foot height. But I don't, I'm not familiar enough with the view to say what the impact of a three-story building would be.
Fair enough. And then my last question is, there's no affordability covenant, right? So there's a potential for affordability, but it is not guaranteed? Is that right?
Correct. They have not signed an agreement with the city at this point. It's still something that's on the table that could happen in the future, but at this time, there's no signed agreement.
Is that normal? I mean, I thought that when we were giving community benefits, that we would ask for community benefits in return? Is that...
So as part of this application, we're not citing affordable housing as a community benefit. You know, you'll notice in the staff report and in my presentation, that wasn't part of the way they met plan consistency or any of the other criteria. So yes, if they had been citing providing affordable housing to help them meet plan consistency or some other criteria, that would have had to have been signed, a signed agreement before we got to this point. But since it's not, it's still up to them if they want to pursue that, but there's no requirement for them to do so at this time.
Okay, thank you. May I ask Ms. Pierce to come forward? I'm picking you because we've known each other for years. So I'm taking you as a representative neighborhood, neighbor, you know, sample. So I want to ask basically the same questions again, just to get a perspective. How did, you said you had just found out about this a few days ago, is that, did I, am I, I don't want to put words in your mouth. When did you find out about this rezoning?
Our RNO was contacted a few weeks ago, and we put out an e-blast to our neighbors about it probably about a week ago. I don't have the exact dates. I'm the vice president of the RNO, but I don't get those notifications. Our president does, and I haven't been able to reach him to find out exactly when he was notified. But this is the second hearing, according to the notification we got. And we got no first hearing, first notification about a first hearing. So...
And then I want to ask, again, the same question about the three to five stories. So as I understand it, this is currently zoned today for three stories?
Yes, it is.
And if they were to not get this rezoning, and they were to build three-story buildings, would that also injure the view of, from the park, of the sunset and the various buildings?
Not as much. It would somewhat because there are a lot of very low buildings. If you look out the back window of my house, I can see a three-story building, which is on the corner. It's the southeast corner of Yale and Broadway. Calory Restaurant is in the bottom of that building. That is a three-story building. So I can see that, but I can see the mountains over that. Just opposite from that building is the Swallow Hill building, which is quite tall. It's not quite three stories. But again, I can see over that. I can see red rocks from my house. But if you put a five-story, I will not see any of that. And I'm on the same plane as the city of Kunming Park. And it would totally, because it's all low, I mean, there are some duplexes that have been built, two-story duplexes, but then it's all little low houses. And if you cross Broadway into Overland, it's also, I mean, there are some new duplexes, but they're like two stories, two and a half stories.
Got it.
And it does not block the view.
Thank you. And then the third question I asked about affordability, I'm assuming that that is not something you'd want to weigh in. I just want to give you an opportunity, should...
No, I just question whether the affordable housing units would actually be built because it's my understanding that sometimes developers can pay a fine and get around that clause.
All right. Thank you very much. No further questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's see, I mean, the developer. So you're envisioning a residential retail mix, I assume?
That is correct, yes.
Ground floor activation. How many units are you envisioning?
Right now, preliminary site plan is about 80 to 85 units.
Eighty, eighty-five.
Mix of sizes, varying from three bedrooms all the way down to studios.
I guess, I guess this is best asked for Scott. Why do we have no development agreement signed at this point?
So the applicant went into that a little bit, that there was an issue with the HUD requirements of the loan they were trying to go for. I'm not totally familiar with the details of that, so he'd actually be better to, if you have more questions about that. But as I was responding to Councilman Heinz, we have no requirement that they agree to an affordable housing commitment at this point. So, you know, they've been talking with host about working that out, but they decided they wanted to go forward with the rezoning request at this time before they had worked all that out, and that's their right to do so.
It is their right to do so, but it makes it awfully difficult to assess such an important part of our city's value that's stated in numerous adopted plans. So while it's certainly their right to move forward at any time, it's problematic for me. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sandoval.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I have the planner answer a few questions? So when you're, when we're discussing, so I'm going to get a little technical, okay? So when we're discussing the view plane, so you're saying that the view plane would cap out at 70, 76 feet. Does that include, so a lot of times in redevelopment, when the base plane is set, it doesn't always allow for development, right? Because if it's sloped, or if there's any grade or anything. So is that, is that taking into account the base plane, like where, how, like how CPD has their formula for the base plane, which, for the public, that means where you build the building? So like if there's any fall on there? So a lot of times, yes, we're talking about the 70-foot cap, but I want to talk about the base plane so that I can actually talk about the building that's being built in the entitlement. Sorry, I'm totally getting wonky.
So that's based on the current topography. So the way it's calculated, as one of the members of the public was stating, it starts at a point in the park, then it goes up as you go out.
I know that, I mean, the base.
And so that sets a, right.
Yeah.
So that sets a, basically a ceiling, a line in the air. And then the way our, that 76 feet is calculated is it takes sort of that value and the current contours, the current topography, and says, "What's the difference?" So it's not based on what the potential base would be when they come in for redevelopment.
Okay.
It's saying 76 feet above where the ground is now is the maximum a building could be.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then for the developer, I have a couple of questions. So you're going from MX to MS, so mixed use to Main Street, which Main Street has more transparency requirements. So can you talk to me about what your idea for active street use would be?
Sure. You know, a lot of it would be retail. Some of it would be, we've also explored putting a couple walk-up units along there to activate the street, to make that a little bit more pedestrian-friendly through there. And then obviously, an entrance coming into the building off of South Broadway, as well as, you know, potential for a leasing or a management office as well. But, you know, as transparent, as active as we can possibly get that corner to be.
But you don't have like an idea for like, will, so real active use, like a leasing office isn't really active, right? A restaurant's really active. A coffee shop is really active, like a barber shop is really active.
Sure.
So I'm talking active street use. You don't have a plan for that?
No, we do. We would, we would activate that. We've explored coffee shop. We've, as we've discussed, we've talked with other restaurants in the area and operators to see if they have an interest in coming over into our site as well. So that is the potential, but just giving you a full description as to what you would see along that South Broadway corridor. Our goal, obviously, is to activate it as best we possibly can, and that would include, you know, retail, as much retail as we possibly can put in place so that, obviously, the community members could be served by those new amenities coming to the South Broadway area.
Okay. And then one last question. So the upper story setback along the alley, right? Because you're adjacent to, you're in alley, and then to the west of you is a protected zone district?
Yes.
So it would be 20 feet? So it would be like a cake, correct?
That's correct. It's kind of like a wedding cake, if you will, that it steps back at, I think it's 27 and 1/2 feet, and then it steps back again, I think, right around 50 feet.
Yeah, 35 feet. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Knich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Scott, I have a cold. I'm sorry, I'm a little fuzzy. Can you walk me through the slide or the place where the height guidance came from? Which plan provided the height guidance?
Yes, that was Blueprint Denver. So it's the place designation, which is Community Corridor, which in the urban neighborhood context says generally up to five stories.
So is there anything, I'm a little confused about when the plan distinguishes three versus five stories. Does Blueprint not make that distinction?
It depends on context. So in some contexts, the Community Corridor has a three-story recommendation, and in some contexts, it is five, or in some contexts, even taller. So in the urban neighborhood context, Community Corridor is generally up to five stories.
So you have to put Slide 16 and Slide 17, for lack of a better word, together to make the five-story determination?
Yes, that's fair.
And then, and it looks like that context does go up and down Broadway to the county line there, Arapahoe County line. I can't, you know, obviously can't speak for what happens below. But do you have other, there was a speaker who claimed there were no other five-story buildings. Has that been something that CPD has verified?
It is not something that I know that we have verified, sorry.
Okay. Do you know if there is other UMS or UMX five zoning in that corridor? I know the adjacent... I know the adjacent properties you have in the, in the staff report, but I don't know about the corridor. Since we're talking about this as a corridor, doing a circle and a dot doesn't make as much sense to me as looking up and down.
Yeah. Yeah, I know it goes up to five stories at some point. I don't know where that happens. But I know, obviously, there are places along Broadway where it's taller than five stories.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Flynn.
Thank you. Scott, I waited until you sat. Thank you. Was, I didn't see anything in the staff report about a survey or an evaluation of the historic nature of the structures on the site. And it looks like there's been numerous modifications, but the one on the south end is 125 years old, and it looks to be probably an old house that's set back on the alley. Is that the original building? And then I can't make out the 1931 portion of the structure on the north lot. But was, was there an assessment of the potential for any landmarking or preservation?
I don't know the details of that. Generally, our landmark staff is aware of these, and if they have concerns, they will raise them. But obviously, before any of the buildings are demolished or modified, they would have to go through a review, and if they are over, over 50 years old, they would have to get that certificate.
Does landmark staff ordinarily, or as a matter of routine, look at structures on parcels that are subject to a rezoning application?
Yeah, typically, they see, or if we see that there are older structures, we'll...
You refer to them?
Refer to them, and they'll tell us whether...
You don't know if that was done here?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't involved in the, the beginning parts of this one, so...
Right. Okay. I think that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ortega.
Thank you, Mr. President. Scott, I'll ask you the first question before you sit down. So when we're talking about the, the maximum height allowed under the new category if this goes through, does that include any of the rooftop utilities? HVAC, any of that stuff?
Right. So there are allowances for certain things to exceed that 70-foot height allowance of the zoning, things like rooftop units and antennas and things like that. However, that 76-foot view plane is a hard cap that nothing can penetrate.
So in this case, they could, they have to stay under that 76, even though they might be able to go above 70, it's got to be under that 76 if you're accounting for, you know, air conditioning, whatever those systems might entail?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. I want to ask Matt Godley if you can come forward. So if you do not do affordable units in your development, what have you calculated the value of the linkage fee contribution to be?
We have not even gone down that path because we are 100% committed to the 10% units at 80% AMI. We've made a commitment to the Overland Park RNO. We've made a commitment to the city. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to paper that yet, document that yet, but we are, like I said, we are 100% committed to doing that.
So if you're doing 80 units, then you're talking about eight affordable. One of you mentioned that that would be a mix of studios to three-bedroom. Is that just in the affordables, or that's in the entire project?
We've, we've been discussing that with the city, and right now, how we've kind of gone through that is that whatever that ultimate unit mix is, we will then have a proportion for that. So if 10% of the units ultimately be three, three-bedroom units, then 10% of the affordable would be three-bedroom units.
Okay. Have you begun to spend money on a site plan or drawings for your proposed development?
We have gone through kind of conceptual type of, of work to kind of understand what that massing would look like and come up with certain levels of elevations, but that is the extent.
Okay. And then, so the, somebody mentioned the, normally, our applications tell us exactly what the size of the site is, how many square feet. I couldn't find that in the documentation. Somebody mentioned 30,000 square feet. Can you just verify the actual size of?
Sure. It's 31,249 square feet.
Okay. So that's under, under an acre?
Yes.
Okay. I think those are all the questions that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, seeing no other questions, the public hearing for Council Bill 20-005 is closed. And we're going to go into comments, and since this one is in my district, although right on the border with my colleague, Councilman Cashman, over there, and right on the border with our, our neighbors in Inglewood, I'll go first. First of all, you know, I want to just start by thanking everyone for coming out and for, you know, coming, taking time. I am, I am sorry that Rosedale does not have a better system set up, that we could have had these conversations a long time ago. Because on my side of the fence, Overland does have a great system and a great RNO, and they were able to have great conversations. And I thank the developer for the time and effort that they took to sit down with and make commitments, real commitments, to that community. I think that this would have been different had we had that infrastructure in place. And so I'm, I'm sorry that that didn't happen like that. I, I also, you know, I just want to start so that I, as I go here, I don't forget, you know, what we're charged with is, does this meet the five legal criteria for rezoning? And there are lots of other things that eat at the fringes of that and sometimes come into play in that. And then there are other things that we really care about but aren't legally what the requirements are for us sitting in our quasi-judicial role to determine, does this meet those criteria and should a rezoning be granted? And so I just want to start by saying that I do think that it has been demonstrated in the staff report and in the application that this does meet those five legal criterias for, for rezoning. I think in addition to that, I just want to focus in, in, in that, that, you know, a lot of what Overland, and I do want to clarify, and I get totally that this has a huge impact also on Rosedale, and I don't want to diminish what a couple of the speakers said about, hey, this really impacts us. That's absolutely true. But I also think that unfortunately, at the microphone, it was diminished that, you know, somebody said, Overland, it doesn't really matter to them and it, they don't really care. They really care deeply. This matters very much to them. They spent a lot of time digging into this, and it, and it does affect them. And, and some of the things that were important to my community that I represent is creating walkability on a key corridor for our city that has historically been a tube to get cars in and out from the suburbs and has failed on a lot of the walkability components to really serve the community. They, they also, you know, I think that we have a view plane here, which is, is unique. There are not many of them in the city, and that is a very special thing and something that is unique in a lot of ways to Denver, and this will not pierce that view plane. Now, that being said, having a view plane is not the same as having your view being protected. Just this morning, we were talking to some residents of a building downtown who purchased their unit because of their view, and now a brand-new building and hotel's going to come, you know, 20 feet from their, their step. There are a lot of views in the city that all of us have, including me, and growing up in the city, that have become accustomed to and become attached to, but that is different than a protected view plane. And I just want to make it extra clear that this project will not be able to pierce into the protected view, even though it will affect people's views. Now, I also think, you know, when we, when we, when we really, when we adopted the new blueprint and the comp plan, and I don't have the language right here that Councilman Cashman usually reads, but, you know, it said that climate change is real and that it should be the driving, one of the driving factors that we evaluate everything through. And, you know, as someone who grew up in Denver in a single-family home community and lives today in Denver in a single-family home community, I think that some of the best way that we can reduce our collective as a city impact on the planet and combat climate change while also protecting our single-family homes is to find places where density is appropriate and make sure that we are supporting density where it is appropriate. And I believe that along Broadway in this corridor, to Councilwoman Kneech was asking earlier, I pulled up the zoning map, there, there is use-by-right zoning on Broadway right now, today. That is five-story and eight-story on Broadway today. This is a corridor that is, whether we want it to or like it or not, going to have three, five, eight-story zoning. This is a place where density is appropriate, where we can build housing that we desperately need, affordable housing and just plain housing. We have a supply and demand issue. On top of needing that affordability, we need units. This is two more floors of units in an area where it's appropriate. And the impact of each of those units on water resources and in terms of carbon emissions is so much less than if you were to take those same 80 units and have to build new single-family homes in Greenfield redevelopment instead of in our, our urban corridor where we have designed our city to accommodate that growth. And that also allows us to not have to change our zoning, and, and other people may disagree with me about this, but like other cities have, that eliminate single-family zoning entirely and say everywhere will be more dense if we continue to put density where density belongs to accommodate the, the growth that we are experiencing. You know, so I think for all of those reasons, and it meets the criteria, I am supportive of this. I also just want to say that I believe, when the developer says that, I mean, at that microphone, on TV, recorded in front of all of us, and to my Neighborhood Association, 100%, this was 99%, I'm 100% committed to delivering more affordability than is required under our current rules. Now, that's another conversation that I think this council is primed to have, is what should the rules, what should the requirements be within the confines of, of state law? But this is above and beyond what the law requires to qualify for rezoning. And standing up there and saying, yeah, I wish that we had signed agreements, it sounds like you wish that too. But this is the same group that delivered some of the first, I think maybe the second project of for-sale in Denver condos after the changes to the construction defects law, so delivered for-sale product that we hadn't seen forever, and, and has committed to the neighborhood and the community and multiple properties that they've been hanging on to. And so I do believe that they will deliver on those promises above and beyond what is on paper today. So for all of those reasons, I will be supporting this tonight, and I would urge my colleagues to support it as well. Councilmember Sandoval.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to acknowledge the constituents out in the, sitting here tonight. I have a couple of view planes in my neighborhood, and they start in a park, and they are supposed to have protected a view of what we thought Union Station as you came down Zuni. And unfortunately, that's not what happened. What happened was the view of downtown Denver is preserved from the park, from where it originates. And I understand the frustration of the view plane because I'm having those same discussions in my neighborhood of these tensions of where the view plane originates. And there are some view planes in Denver where actually the state has been able to come in and block our entire view plane of where it originates because the state doesn't have to follow the city's ordinances. So this tension in development, I, it's real. I absolutely understand that. And I also understand that your desire to keep your views, and I also hear you saying change is hard. I think all of us, I would not, I would not sit up here and say change is easy. I'm born and raised in North Denver. You want to see change? Come over to my little neck of the woods. Come on, Tennyson. We have seen major change. So change is what is happening in Denver, and it's real. And so to the developer, when I talk about active street use, I'm working on a project on Tennyson, and I hope you really take that serious and that you actually really activate Broadway. I mean, it is one of the most amazing corridors in Denver, and to have units on there, it doesn't work. We have units, ground floor, walk-up units on Tennyson, it doesn't work. They end up becoming, nobody uses them. They end up becoming the back door, and the garage comes, becomes the front door, and they don't get activated. Leasing spaces are active street use. You actually want people. And the more eyes that we have on streets, the more safe that I feel our environment is. But in the end-all, say-all, I think Broadway's amazing. I get a little bit frustrated myself with Blueprint Denver. I never know how these are going to end up popping up. I don't know how we go from three stories, like Councilwoman Kneech said. It seems still confusing to me, and I study zoning. So I hope to get more clarity through this process as I learn of where these are, but I am glad to see that it's going from MX to MS, which creates more transparency requirements and has better, I think, uses. It doesn't, it takes the general form out of it, and it does, and I think a lot of buildings are not utilized well under the general shop front form. So in that, I will be supporting it tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Mr. President. This one is a tough one for me, I have to say. You know, because we do want to activate the ground floor, we do want to create walkable placemaking areas, and this makes a lot of sense. I mean, this, this is, Broadway is where we, we want to drive the density, that's what we want to do. My, my concern with it at the same time is twofold. First of all, that this is an incredibly unique situation because of the view plane, which is different from anything, I think, up to this point that we've really dealt with. And the second is that as I'm looking at the staff report and I'm looking at, you know, kind of what has been filled out here, that we're looking at, the justifying circumstances are changes that are within the zoning code already. So those aren't really justifying circumstances, those aren't really changes, because they're not, those are use-by-right. They're not changes that are outside of the zoning code. They're, you know, the public health, safety and general, general welfare. What we're looking at here is sort of like, you know, well, Blueprint Denver 2019 came in and was adopted. If we were to use that as our sort of excuse, we, that could be a blanket excuse for anything. We've talked about this before. So I'm a little bit disturbed by the rationales that are used to sort of describe the justifications for what we need to, what we need to look at as we're looking at our five criteria, because these rationales, to me, do not necessarily do what needs to be done in order to get the job done. So I am going to hold and listen to my councilmembers and see what other people have to say about this, because I'm really, I'm really torn on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be brief because you, Councilwoman Clark, and you, Councilwoman Sandoval, very succinctly said everything I wanted to say, so I will be quick. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We always really appreciate people who are here late at night, sitting on those very uncomfortable seats, and it's especially hard in the winter when it's super dark. So thank you. The few points, I'll just reiterate that you both already said. One is that there's already zoning on Broadway, not just five and, and eight, but there's also a 12-story zoning further north on Broadway. There is also plan support for this that we talked about. Broadway is a major transit corridor in our city. It is one of our busiest transit corridors in our city. And as Councilwoman Clark said, that is where we want to have density. And again, the view plane, it, it is complying with the view plane, so I, I will be supporting it. It meets the criteria that we are supposed to be voting on. I also appreciate your willingness to have a signed document promising that you're going to build some affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Change is not hard. Change is bone-rattling, especially at the pace that Denver has been traveling in recent years. I agree with so much of what my colleagues have said as far as, I don't believe the, the protected view plane will be impacted. I don't know what the elevation is from Kunming, but I think it's probably pretty close to the State Home Campus. What will be interrupted, as you stated, Mr. President, is the view of neighbors close by, without question. And I hate that. Yeah, I hate it in my neighborhood. You know, I've, I've been in Denver 45, 47 years and have seen the change. Well, the view that I look at now is the naked Gates Rubber Company campus. For the first time in generations, you can be on Broadway and have a great view of the Front Range and, and take pictures of it now because that's going away. However, I don't have tremendous... have tremendous problem with the zoning that's requested. What I have a problem with is giving an entitlement on promises. And it's not my job to guess which developer is going to hold to his promise and which isn't. I've made it a policy, and I stood by this in the CDOT property rezoning from the beginning of that. The developer would say, "We're 100% committed to building this." They had a buyout option in their contract, and I, they said, "We're 100% committed to building this." And what I told them was, "I hear you. I believe you are a good person, but it's just another story until it's on paper." And again, that is no comment about this developer. I don't know Mr. Godley and his team. I believe them to be good people. But we're going to be presenting them with a substantial entitlement should this pass. And I'm not able to do that without that signed agreement. And the basis is, while we talk about established plans, our established, some of our established plans at least, talk about the importance of affordable housing, and health is housing, and housing is health. And there are endless studies to prove that. We need more than 10% out of these developments. That's a whole other discussion. But I'll be unable to approve this based on the lack of that signed agreement.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the advantages of being down in the queue is that a lot of people have already said some of the same things that I would have said. The only other thing that I'd mention is that it hurts me to hear that residents only found out a few days before today. And I don't think that that's a concern with community planning and development. I think it's a concern with our current RNO process. I think that it was mentioned a few times tonight that the RNO that is over this area is non-functional. I think that was the phrase that was used, but something similar, if that isn't the exact phrase. It was something along those lines. I know I bought a condo on the ninth floor in October 2011, and I had a view of downtown Coors Field and Mountains. And there are nine RNOs that represent me, and no one told me that there was a 12-story building that was going to go up. And so now I have a view of a whole bunch of bedrooms, which is maybe good for some people. I prefer the view of Coors Field and the Mountains. But so that's, I am frustrated with the where ordinances now, because RNOs are the official, in-law vehicle for transmitting information to the neighbors and getting information back to the city. And so I would say that, in addition to what a lot of my colleagues have said, the only thing that I'd add is that this is yet another example of how I'm looking forward to having a conversation on how to improve the RNO process or laws to make sure that stuff like this doesn't happen again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Seda-Baka.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo most of the comments shared by Councilman Cashman. I hate that the process is set up for us to be reviewing rezone before we actually see the plan or the development agreement. It's a glitch within our agency, and I think it's something that needs to be changed, because in a context of a crisis, these entitlement zonings are really adding fuel to the fire of the crisis. And so I think that it's unfortunate that we have to be careful with our entitlement zoning, but I think that's absolutely the context we're in right now. And I also think that the justifications are, they can be interpreted differently and argued differently. And so I don't believe that this is consistent with the plan. I also think it's problematic that the staff called out justifications related to housing when we don't have a development agreement or a commitment on housing. And so that feels problematic to have that in the PowerPoint. I think it also is a dominant, will have a domino effect. Right now, it's a speculators' market, and when we grant these entitlement zonings, every single property along that corridor is not, this has set the precedent for all of them to go up that high as well. And so I think that it just, it feeds that beast of speculation that's really backing us into a corner. And I also think that it is a myth that we don't have enough housing. We have enough housing. We just, they're just not priced appropriately. And without a commitment through a development agreement to price things appropriately, I can't in good conscience support this. So for tonight, I will be not supporting this rezone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Torres.
Before Cashman, thank you.
Cashman has already gone once, so I'm getting to everybody first before I go back for a second.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, some of what I appreciate about this proposal is that it's going from mixed-use to Main Street. And that means accessibility to people and not just a built environment for cars, which I do appreciate, especially in South Broadway. One of the main streets in my district is Santa Fe Drive, which is currently zoned Main Street 5. So this is a stretch that is now three lanes one way, that will be reduced to two lanes one way, that could potentially be at five stories for the largest majority of that stretch, eight stories for the rest of it. So I appreciate what kind of the pushback is on the height. This, however, Broadway is two directions, two traffic lanes each way, pedestrian access. I feel like it is right for Main Street, and it is right for 5. I am uncomfortable with not being able to see a housing proposal. But I'm not sure that that outweighs where, I appreciate that this is going when it comes to Main Street rezoning, which it is anticipated in blueprint farther up, where it's still mixed-use right now. And I know that views are tough. I've got a view plane affecting one of the projects in my district. That is the one that Councilwoman Sandoval mentioned. It's completely obstructed by state-built property. It's not a view plane anymore for anyone. So those should be protected. And unfortunately, for residents, it's not the view from your home. It's the view from that single point on, in the park, that has, where that protection originates from. So I will also be supporting this rezoning tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kneech.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think many folks have already established the record on the criteria, both for the particular zone district and for the fact that there is no violation of the height. I want to thank everyone for coming out, and I think just to add, you know, my perspective on the issue of equity. I have supported many rezonings in the northern half of the city on major thoroughfares, right? Colfax, federal, you know, some of those major thoroughfares. When I have, you know, had similar tense rezonings on University Boulevard, I have said, "That is a major thoroughfare, and it's appropriate for Main Street zoning." And so I feel like it's really important for me to be consistent in my approach and say that it's not okay to have some of that density, especially in the northern half of the city, and that, and not do it in the southern half. That would be inequitable, in my opinion, both based on, you know, just generally geographic issues, but also we have many of our communities of color in the nor-
Sorry, I couldn't quite-
Whoa. I wasn't even touching that. But having many of our communities of color and lower-income communities seeing these types of changes on their main streets, you know, like Broadway, with less infrastructure investment for safety. So for example, on Broadway, we have done medians, for example, and a lot of the intersection safety improvements to make that safer. And so in some ways, we are more prepared for the growth in this corridor than we have been in other places that we have already done the rezoning. So for me, there is an equity aspect here. I have been torn back and forth as well about the lack of a development agreement. I do just want to, as always, remind the community, the city council, we cannot deny a rezoning based on an inability or unwillingness to provide rental housing under state law. If we were to do that tonight, that would not be a basis on which we can turn down a zoning. I think in this case, we have a situation where we have a commitment to do it, but a lack of an agreement. So I think the question is, is the lack of the agreement? And I think that is, for my colleagues, a concern. I think, feeling equally torn, I'm just going to fall on the other side of the razor's edge and say, "I think it's important to proceed with this." But I, and I apologize for not asking this in the Q&amp;A, but I'll ask it rhetorically. I hope that your development team, one, doesn't consider this the end of the process. You've now learned about neighbors who are passionate about your site, who you did not find before, for whatever reason. That's been well-covered by others. I hope that you will sit down and engage with them to understand better about the design elements they've described, to understand better what it is they're proposing, and to give them your input, even after we move forward tonight. For those who want to see no change, that's going to be unsatisfactory. But those, for those who say, "I'd like to have a voice in that. I'd like to be able to do what this other neighborhood did and make my voice heard," I hope that you will hear them out and spend that time with them. There's no reason why this chamber should be the end of that dialogue or that process. So the one last thing I will add is, I don't know what you're hearing from HUD and why you're concerned. If for some reason it's the right of first refusal that is concerning them, I want to make sure that you understand that if you go to perpetual affordability, the city will waive its right of first refusal. There's no reason why you cannot put a covenant in this property. And so I don't know who you're dealing with. That is not something that should get in the way of doing this covenant. So it concerns me to hear that that's an issue. It concerns me to hear that you weren't able to resolve that. But I would ask that you stay in touch with us as a council and that we get a copy of that signed agreement, and that you don't, you know, leave us in the position of having taken your word and finding ourselves not well-served. I will say, there has been no example that I am aware of in my nine years of council of someone committing to build housing and then not doing it in terms of, you know, using the laws. So again, we don't have the law that says you have to build it. We have a law that says you have to pay the fee, and you have an option to build it. And where folks have told us they were doing it, unless the development didn't happen at all. And that happens sometimes. Recession's happened. Bank loans fall through. But I know of no developer in the nine years of agreements I've seen who is committed to doing it and then didn't do it while they still built the building. So, you know, that's based on my limited experience. But based on that, I am comfortable moving forward in the absence of a development agreement. I don't, I would ask CPD to not put us in this position again, to work with your friends at HOST, and work with your applicants, and ask them very forcefully to consider delaying before they come forward. I don't think we need to be in this situation again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to let the record go unchallenged with the inference that the Rosedale-Hartford-Golch Neighborhood Association is dead or inactive or not working hard for its community. I've worked with this group for years and years. They make a great contribution to creating community in that part of town. But I have shared the frustration that some of the residents have shared, that this particular group, among many others across our city, has taken the position that we don't take positions, because it leaves us in this space of wondering really what the larger community conscience is. I appreciate my colleague, Councilman Heinz, bringing the topic up. It was in my notes, which I chose not to read from, about the fact that we've begun the discussion about what can we do to help the RNOs fulfill that dual role of telling the community what the heck we're doing here at the city, and then telling us what the heck their constituents feel about that. It's a critical piece of the dialogue. So while I also feel a critical piece of what RNOs do is create community. And I can't, you know, this group held concerts last year and have done holiday events and numerous things throughout the year, do a fine job at that. I hope that RNOs all across the city will take seriously that opportunity to play a more active role in the political process. And so thank you for giving me a little bit of room, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Seda-Baka, are you back up?
Yes, just real quick, wanted to go on record, challenging that we can't deny a rezoning because it doesn't include housing. I think that we have a lot of latitude to interpret what is consistent with the plan. And if all of our plans are prioritizing equitable, affordable, and inclusive housing, then I do think that we have some latitude there to say, "Without a development agreement, this does not fit one of our priorities." And so without the development agreement, it is not consistent with our plan. And I think that we need to challenge ourselves to think about our plans differently. And not to impugn anyone, but there is a development in my district that was originally supposed to be housing that, in the 11th hour, turned to a hotel. And they've gone on record saying that it was going to be housing initially. And so just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. That concludes the comments. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Black.
Aye.
Seda-Baka.
No.
Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Heinz.
Aye.
Cashman.
Kneech.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Sandoval.
Aye.
Sawyer.
No.
Torres.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye. Madam Secretary, please close the voting and announce the results.
Ten ayes, three nays.
Ten ayes, three nays. Council Bill 20-005 has passed.